Okay. Calling to order the committee of the whole meeting for Pottstown Council as of April 4, 2018. If you kindly rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me announce we have one cancellation, number 12, and I'm going to substitute in there. I'm going to get a report from Mr. Yerger about the signal project for our lights here in town. And on number nine, before council goes into discussion, I have Mr. Don Smale who will give a presentation on that situation that we're in. So, under subcommittees, infrastructure, Vice President Culp.
Okay. We had our regular meeting on the third Thursday of the month. And Parks and Rec have some of the same projects as last month. They're in the third phase of the playground. Stones are down, fence down in late May. Spray Park may be down for a while because of the projects. Pollack Park is still, they're still doing work with that and trying, and doing different, they're just waiting on, I guess, things for that. Public Works, Pico farmed out underground wiring from Manitoni to Madison because of issues with lighting that we've had with electricity. Closed Loops on its way, they're waiting for more of the poles to be delivered, and that'll be in May. Suture, who was supposed to do the paving last year, who didn't, he's going to finish a contract from last year, beginning in April, patching streets as much as possible. Pipes settled down, we had 20 breaks this year. And there was also, I guess that was it, that's about it, okay. And licensing inspections, they're working, still working the second cycle, 50,000-plus units, short-term, no tells except for property transfers, they're doing all that type of And there's many, there's many property transfers are up, and many renovations and flips, and it's up 11 percent. The industrial highway, they're waiting for, as far as the bike path, they're waiting for Norfolk Southern to give them the right of way, and who knows how long that'll be. And that's probably about it for infrastructure.
Good. Thank you. Economic development, Ms. Lee Clark.
Good evening, councilors, Madam Mayor. I just want to update you on a few things. The first thing that I want to say is I just want to thank you all for the LERTA. I know some of your predecessors were responsible for that as well. And also, the agreement that the school board came to in offering LERTA. It is creating a lot of interest, and it is something that we need to make sure that we market more. Developers looking to put significant money into a property that needs a lot of work, that has the potential to be reassessed and have a tax bill immediately hit them can be a big deterrent. So they are really very grateful to have that opportunity. And as public funding becomes more and more scarce on the state level, DCED dollars, it is just one more thing, along with neighborhood assistance programs and the like, that can help in relieving some of the financial immediate upfront burden to developers. So I did want to thank you for that. Cedarville's project is moving along, you know that, as the BB&amp;T building right on the corner of Hanover and High. The CEO of Cedarville is working to be into the building by May. Asbestos remediation has been completed on that building. So I want to remind everybody, the third, fourth, and fifth floor of that building have been vacant for over 20 years. That's a big win for the Pottstown borough. Amrith Brewery, I would like you to check it out. Cuisine India, Shala Adeluro, you know her as one of the larger investors on High Street. The brewing operation is ready and up, and I encourage you to go over and see it. It will be open this weekend. So they're reopening tomorrow, and that's really a great thing. Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board, it is on their radar, they already reached out to me because they would like to do a piece, they're doing a piece of distilleries and microbreweries throughout the county, and we're certainly on their radar. So they'll be including Manitoni Still Works, Sly Fox, Pottstown United Brewing, et cetera. And I told them not to forget about Prince's as well. Hopefully, that will be open before long. Just out of an FYI, and anybody that knows that wants to invest, $2.1 million, just over, is the asking price for America's best on High Street, that has gone on to the market this week. So that's all I have at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Transportation, Vice President Culp. Transportation? Okay. All right. Olivet Boys and Girls Club, Counselor Kirkland.
I've received a report.
Okay. Library, is it Mr. Green or his representative here? Ms. Penrod.
Having spent most of my day today in library meetings, I think I can add lib a little bit for art. The youth department level is undergoing some additional renovations as we speak. Because of those renovations, we apologize in advance, we will need to close April 11th and 12th, which is Wednesday and Thursday, and April 25th and 26th, also Wednesday and Thursday, due to fumes from the glue and the cleaning and everything. Part of that youth department level renovation includes the addition of a new makers' space, I know what that is now. It's where they put in 3D printers, and robots, and robotic things, and, and, and other things like that to bring kids. It's not, it's just not just books anymore, you know? Also, the programming has continued at an outstanding pace, I don't have those numbers, sorry, art. Bobby Rydel, Wildwood Days, will be performing, not performing, he'll be signing a book, he'll be signing his book April 21st at the library from 2:00 to 4:00, please come, buy a book or just meet him. Charlie Zom, the Celtic singer, is a fundraiser we have on April 28th, 20 bucks, come, support us. There is, probably in May, we're going to have the official opening dedication of Clara's Garden in the front as part of our landscaping makeover in honor of Clara Haas's 57 years of service at the library, presented by the Board of Directors. And Mother's Day gift program, book plates are available for $25, another one of our fundraising programs. Come use the library and support us, thank you for your support.
Thanks. Thank you. Pottstown School District, anyone here? No? Ad hoc zoning, Counselor Prosser, no meeting? Animal Committee, Counselor Kirkland.
Uh, yes, I was, some information. Three items here, the Montgomery County SBCA, Perkiel Millville, it's Perkiel Millville, branch, is offering low-cost spray neuter day for house cats. $30 per cat, two-cat limit, number 610-754-7822. Number two, the Metro Veterinary Association is holding a pet CPR first aid class Saturday, May 19th, from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. Call Sarah at 610-666-1050. And the third item is Monday, April 16th, is a humane lobby day in Harrisburg. Tickets are available on humanepa.org/upcomingevents.
Good. Thank you. JIs, safety, Chief Drumheller.
For those of you who don't know, we had a homicide in the borough. For the last three days, our detectives have not slept. They have worked diligently under the direction of Sergeant Markovich, who's really put that team together. We worked with the county detectives, and we ended up making an arrest in Waterbury, Connecticut, with, using the fugitive task force. He will be transported back to the borough, and we'll begin the process of then going through the steps for criminal prosecution. So the fact that they, we worked so hard at this and put a lot of work into it, I can't tell you how pleased I am with the Montgomery County Detective Division and the Pottstown Police Department, specifically the Pottstown Police Detective Division. They, they, we, in times like this, we lean on them to do a hard job and the heavy lifting of the police department. And if you would have seen that detective division, you know, their diet is terrible right now, they're eating pizza, they're, they're drinking sodas, they're trying to keep awake, but they really, really made Pottstown proud, and I can't tell you how proud I am of that group.
Great.
And they worked hard. So. With that, I have a little statement here today I want to read to you, and you'll have to excuse me. Taking the glasses off so I can sleep better. Says, "I would like to announce that during my tenure as chief, Part 1 crimes have been reduced by 19.7 percent in five years." 19.7 percent, Part 1 crimes. There are many factors that go into the, involve in this drop, however, the bottom line is Part 1 crimes are on a four-year reduction. This is great news to the borough. This reduction indicates that crime is not rampant in Pottstown, regardless of what you read or see in social media. I reflect back on the 30 years of, as a police officer in the borough, I've shared my, I've, I've seen my share of issues and problems. In this police, in this police department, we have tried to stay on the cutting edge of training and equipment. I know that for every, every one of you in front of me have toiled over the budget. I've tried my best to keep the goals and dreams of the police department affordable. I've strived to keep the police department relevant in today's world. This community has complex issues, and the best way to address them is with a team approach. I offer that every week since I have been the chief, a group of pastors have met once a week and prayed for our community. In addition, they pray for the safety of our police officers. This is a classic example of teamwork. I've tried to make teamwork the fabric that binds this community together. So after much thought and soul-searching, I've decided to leave the drop program early. This speech serves as my notice that my last day in a Pottstown police uniform will be July the 6th, 2018. I will leave that day at 4 o'clock. This provides council with a 90-day notice that I am required to do by my contract. I thank you all for the opportunity to serve this community. I've enjoyed my time at the borough, and I've wore this uniform with pride. As chief, I try to guide, train, and direct both the community and my fellow officers. I will miss it. In the past, I have counseled fellow officers that you will know in your heart when it's time for you to leave. It's my time. So this warrior plans to take off his sword and lay it down. I must trust in the officers that surround me that they will seamlessly fill the gap of my departure. I offer to you that my, I offer to you my desire or my opinion as to the future direction of the police department if you so choose it. I am willing to discuss it in an executive session of where we are and where we, where we should be in the future. With that said, I offer thanks to everybody, and thank you for the opportunity to serve the borough.
And before you step down, I mentioned it to you on the way in, now let me mention it publicly. I happened to be at a meeting this morning, and someone from the DA's office told us about the pleasure they have working with your team, and that they feel it's the finest police team in Montgomery County. And you and the people you serve should know that. Emergency Services. I don't think Chief Luzar is here, but...
Welcome. Thank you, everyone. I'll give my report for Goodwill Fire Company. I apologize I haven't made it to the last two months' meetings, but I promise I'll be brief. For January, we ran a total of 96 calls. February, we did 73 calls, and March, we did 65 calls. All those numbers are above-average totals for a month's worth of emergencies. For training, over the past month or so, we had seven members attend the Drive to Survive program. 25 members attend infrequent skills training, which is more of an EMS-based training on some of the things that we don't get to do as often as we might like. Five members attended a chief officer seminar at Montgomery County Fire Academy. One member completed the Fire Inspector 1 certification. Eight members attended ropes rigging and Stokes operation training. Six members attended airbag and stabilization operations training. 50 members attended the yearly hazmat operations refresher, which is required by law. Forty of our members attended a, the yearly OSHA infectious control training, which is more of an EMS-based program to deal with bloodborne pathogens. And we've had four members complete and are still involved with the firefighting one program that's going on here in the borough. They, they completed the first part. The second part is currently going on. And the third and fourth part of the program will be throughout the rest of the year for a total of about 188 hours of training. We had four members attend an active shooter drill at the Montgomery County VOTEC School. For fire prevention and safety, we did a safety talk at the YMCA. We met with Channel 6 Operation Save a Life and received 198 smoke detectors to be given out in the borough, free of charge, they're available at Goodwill Fire Company. And we do go out and install those if we are requested to. And in fact, we just recently did two installations in home. We did a safety talk for a Boy Scout troop, Our Place to Grow daycare, another Boy Scout troop 99, and a fire prevention talk at the Pottstown Rehab and Training Center, which also included fire extinguisher training for the staff that works there. For fundraising, January 27th and 28th, and March 10th and 11th, we attended the Montgomery County Fire Academy and served lunches to the students that were down there for the events at the Fire Academy training. And we just completed our three-day Easter flower sale at the firehouse where we were at the station for basically three days straight selling flowers leading up to Easter. And if I may close, I'd just like to say to Chief Drumheller, I don't know if this is the right terminology for this, but congratulations or a job well done on apprehending a murderer here in town, and whatever led you to your decision to, to leave your position, you will be missed, you've always been a friend of the fire service, and we want to thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you. Evening.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Andy Piles, I'm from the North End Fire Company. Last month, we had two fundraising events, we did a boot drive down at Charlotte Wilson, a couple of people wanted to see us out there. And then we also had a Texas Roadhouse dinner. Go in, we got a percentage of what everybody came in and had for dinner that night, so it worked out pretty well for us. Training-wise, we do training every Thursday night, it's different each week. We've been working with some of the out-of-town companies, some of the companies that come into town for, you know, house fires, things along that line. So we've been kind of honing our skills with them, some of the guys in town. We have, three of our junior members are taking the Fire One class, they're doing really well, they should be done end of September. So, a couple more guys in town. And we were a little slower last month, we only had 36 runs in town, but turned out for all of them. So, that's all I have, thank you, everybody.
Very good, thank you.
Good evening, council. And mayor. Under the, our training and calls, call volume and stuff, it's probably going to be very similar to that, they didn't get me the, the numbers report because everything got messed up. They thought it was next week. So, needless to say, I think our, our call numbers and things are very similar to what, what Kevin gave. We did, under the training, we did have a number of, I think it was about 20 guys were out, people were out for the hazmat training for, in February for, that Pico sponsored. We took one of the training nights this month, and it was just last week, we made that a family night. They had the families come in, and they had, they brought their kids in, and they did the Easter egg decorating. So that was a very good time, they had pizza and soda and everything for that. We have that motto that Charlie likes to follow, "Family first, job second, firehouse third." So we put family first that night. Fundraising, well, our hoagie sales are back, if anybody's had them, get ahold of me or anyone at the firehouse that are starting up, we'll have those orders have to be in by this Friday, and they will be available for pickup next Sunday, the 15th. Our annual beef and beer for our, supporting our firefighters for events that aren't covered under budget, Terry, that's going to be held at Norco again April, or Saturday, April 28th, 6 p.m. We have to have it off-site simply because, as I said before, we aren't big enough. Our annual Easter sale flower, as Kevin said, we spent three days there, our people, and we sold every one of them. I was impressed. Usually, we have a couple left. We have a 5K run coming up June 2nd at Riverfront Park, anybody interested can contact Ashley Wright now, or through the, or through the, at the firehouse, or through the Phillies' Facebook page or website, it's, it's going to be a family event, again, it's, it'll be a walk-run kind of thing, and they're going to have a free one-mile event there for the kids. Also, coming up on May, or in May, 19th, we're going to have a thing called a cigar and bourbon social. That'll be, it's open, tickets are available, and, but there's limited tickets because it'll be at the firehouse, it's very small. So I can be contacted myself, or myself and Charlie Pierce or Brian Kish. The Explorers this month will, have been continuing to work with juniors to going over everything that they're learning, they are attending, as Kevin had, I don't know how many, what our numbers are, they're in the Fire One class, which is being held at the Goodwill Station. And we've been going over with them and, you know, learning their, you know, the apparatus and where the equipment is, and, you know, keeping them, you know, building the pride and talking with them. And that's pretty much all that I have.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, is Human Relations Commission, Ms. Lovegood.
Good evening, councilors. The Human Relations Commission March meeting was not held due to no quorum. The Commission's April meeting is Tuesday, April 10th, 2018, in council chambers at 6 p.m. The Commission continues to work on the Community Day event to be held on Sunday, June 10th, I mean, July, June 10th, yeah, June 10th, 2018. And the Montgomery County Health and Human Services, the Community Connections, the Montgomery County Community College Teen Challenge, the American Heart and Stroke Association of PA, and the Pottstown Tower Health Hospital are a few of the organizations that are committed to participate in the community fair on Sunday, June 10th, from 12:00 noon to 5:00 p.m., right outside on 100 block of High Street. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Ad hoc financial sustainability, Mr. Kirkland.
Unfortunately, due to a family situation, I wasn't able to attend that meeting last Thursday, but if you have anything you'd like to add?
I was there, and, for the most part, it was a re-review of the last meeting, and staff had reported to us that one of the suggestions made was to review and make sure that we are covering our costs for all the services we provide. So each of the department heads, working through the finance department, submitted their numbers, how many hours, how many dollars, whatever, so that we now have actual costs for any of the services that are provided. And that will be put together to compare with our current fee schedules. Some may be increased, some may be reduced, but at, from that point forward, at least they'll be accurate. Looks like it could be a financial advantage for the borough to do so. That's about it. And we're meeting again this month. Thank you very much. Mayor's Report.
I just wanted to thank our police department and Montgomery County for the amazing job that they did in apprehending a suspect for our recent homicide. And Chief, I just want to say, it's only been a few months working with you, but every time you call, no matter what you're calling me about, it's the brightness in my day. And so I want to say thank you for all of your hard work. Chief's constantly emailing me at 3:00, 4:00 in the morning because he's working his little butt off, so your retirement is deserved, and you are going to be greatly missed. On a lighter note, we had our Rotary Pancake Breakfast that I volunteered at, it was a fundraiser, thank you Carol for attending. I met with the nurses at Pottstown Hospital to discuss their negotiations with Tower Health. I volunteered at the Meals on Wheels event with Joe Kirkland, Twyla Fisher, and Rich Newell. We delivered meals for a couple hours in the morning, which was a wonderful experience. I encourage anyone who wants to get involved in the community to go over to our Meals on Wheels Center. It's outside of the borough, it's right across from the Valley Forge ENT, and they need help putting meals together and deliveries. Peggy and I met with Shila and had a delicious dinner at Cuisine India, and I'm excited that she's reopening in Pottstown with a place for us to drink after our meetings. I had the pleasure of participating in Drop Everything and Read Day. I got to read to Mrs. Ferguson's kindergarten class at Rupert Elementary, and I got to dance with the children as well, so that was pretty fun. And I also volunteered at the Rotary Four-Way Speech Contest. We had seven exceptional contestants from Pottstown, Potts Grove, and Hill High Schools. I spoke at the March for Our Lives rally, and I want to thank our outstanding young citizens for organizing that event and for making their voices heard. Coming up, April 8th, Grumpy's is making brunch at Manitoni Still Works from 11:00 to noon, and I will be attending. April 21st is our Big Rock the Block cleanup. Unfortunately, I will be in Los Angeles that day, so I cannot help out and participate. However, I have recruited my Rotary group to go in my place. So after they clean up the highway on 724, they're coming right over to Rock the Block to continue cleaning up. April 29th is our Climate March Rally from 2:00 to 5:00, and it's going to start at 800 East High Street in front of the Hill School. So I encourage everyone to come out and support. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. You'll notice the seat next to me is empty, so we won't be having a manager's report, he's out tonight. I do want to thank staff for their hard work and cooperation in his absence, and we're still watching you. Seven is Genesis Housing. Ms. Memberg.
So, Judy Memberg from Genesis Housing, there are a few new faces here, so just did a little quick list of properties we've done in Pottstown, both our main list of work that we do throughout the county. I have to, I counted, right? It's still... So every year, we ask the county for funding for the work that we do. So we're something called the Community Housing Development Organization, and as such, there's set aside of the home dollars, that are federal dollars, for housing projects. And so this is funding that couldn't go to another nonprofit, that's not a community housing organization, that can't go to local governments, they can't use the county, can't use it, so set aside. And so the last few years, well, not two years, we've been asking for the money to go to Pottstown to get a lighted property and renovate it and sell it to a new homeowner. So on the list that I gave you, so this would be our twenty-eighth vacant house that had been renovated and then sold to a homeowner. We're about to go to settlement on one next week. We've also done eight that were new construction prior to the housing busts, we need to do things like that. And then we've done fifty-six houses that are homeowner rehabs, that are existing homeowners that, that through the county program got rehabs, through the Pottstown Direct Program, and then the county-wide is another nineteen. On the National Penn Program, I didn't remember when I was going quickly, there are three Narsetown ones on that, sorry about that, I forgot to cut those out. And then there's some other outstanding projects that we've done, and some of the larger projects that we've done with partners. So just a little overview. So every year, we apply for these grant monies, and the county tweaks the applications a little every year. So this year is, requires, one of the things that's on a checklist is, do you have a letter of support from the municipality? So that was usually a requirement for bigger projects, for a controversial project, but not for something where there's, you know, don't believe anyone, but inject us taking a property that is lighted, that costs more to renovate than what it'll be worth when we try to sell it and turn it back into homeownership. So we're asking for your support.
You know, the number one question is, will this be owner-occupied?
Yes. The way that the rules are set up, we have, starting out of time, if you can't sell it, then it could become rental, but we're very careful in the selection of the location. Since they changed the rules a few years ago, I mean, we're very confident in selling.
Any questions? Okay, we'll list this for Monday.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Just in general about this list. All the ones that's here that's marked completed, are those just houses that's available for people to...
No, no, no. So the, the ones that sold to buyers were vacant houses that we did renovation on, or the new construction. And then the, there's the homeowner rehab, these people already owned their home, and they had, soon began problems.
Okay.
And could have worked in repairs.
Oh, okay.
So we've completed the county's homeowner rehab program.
Okay, I see.
And for a while, Pottstown had a set aside of their own monies. And so that's the difference between Pottstown homeowner and county homeowner.
I see.
Those, those people already knew their houses.
Right, right. Okay, we'll list this for Monday.
I'm sorry.
We'll list this for a vote on Monday. Thank you. Eight is a Schuylkill River Sodrum. Anyone here for that, about that? She's coming Monday. Okay. The representative will be here Monday. And their, their request is that we grant them permission to serve alcohol, not sell. You can, you can read the write-up. It's in your packet. Number nine is YMCA closing, and I, I went to request that Don Smale, he's been part of the YMCA Task Force, he was on the Board of Directors. I asked him to give us about a five-minute presentation of where we are and how to keep it here.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. Just a quick correction, I was not on the Board of Directors.
Oh, you were.
I am a member of the Task Force. At one time, years ago, I was a member of the Board of Directors of Boyer Town, but anyway, regardless, I found myself in, right smack in the middle of this particular issue. And I'm not sure how much you all know, so I'll, I'll start in November, when the community at large was informed that the Philadelphia Freedom Valley YMCA Board had decided to close the Pottstown facility. The community was taken by surprise. Everyone was taken by surprise. It really wasn't announced ahead of time. And the decision came without any input from the community. And there's, there's a whole bunch of anger in this community. I've been talking to a lot of different people, and the reason for the anger is that the board didn't reach out to the community and say, hey, we've got a problem. We need some help. Let's talk about this so that we can figure out how we're going to keep the Pottstown wide open for the next hundred and thirty-eight years. So the Task Force was formed, and the Task Force, I'm not a representative for the Task Force, I'm speaking as an individual. There will be a statement coming from the Task Force, and I expect that shortly. But the Task Force was formed, I was invited, as were twelve or so other people, to help. In, in their description, they wanted to create a Y without walls. So what that means to them is it's a facility, I mean, it's a programming within the community that they can continue to offer services without a facility. Initially, I went into it, as did most of the members on the committee or the Task Force, with an open mind. We were going to try and help. But the, the more that we dug into it, the more we realized that there was something that just wasn't, it just didn't sit right. We started, we were looking at numbers, the numbers were pretty grim. They were painted as a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar annual operating loss, eleven million dollars worth of repairs to the building needed over the next ten years, and three million dollars of those repairs were needed immediately. So as, as we started digging in this, I talked a lot with Jim Conick, who was the chairman of the board at the time of the first merger back in two thousand and seven. And he shared with me a lot of documents and basically said that they were breaking even at the time of the first merger. So then the question becomes, how do you go from breaking even to a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar loss in ten years when the purpose of a merger is to improve the financial operations of the, of the organization? So the more we dug into it, the questions kept arising, and at the, at the last meeting, Sean Elliott, who's the CEO of the, of the Freedom Valley Organization, came in, and we challenged him with some of the numbers. One of the things that we found out that was, was a shock to us was that Freedom Valley charges back Pottstown about seven-hundred-thousand dollars a year in admin fees. So the admin fees come back, and, and I asked him the question, what, what are the admin fees for? And he responded, it's for things like H.R. and I.T. So if you think about that, that's pretty expensive, H.R. and I.T., when, you know, and it's also coincidental that the operating loss kind of equals the, the chargeback. So as we looked back through the numbers, one of the things we saw is that the first merger was in two thousand and seven, that was with Phoenixville. The second merger occurred in two thousand and twelve, that was when Freedom Valley merged with Philadelphia. At that point in time, that I, we believe is when the, the chargeback, at least the way it's showing on the financial statements, that's when the operational numbers really started to tank. So we pressed him on that, and we said, well, if this is a chargeback, what happens to that seven-hundred-thousand-dollar number when Pottstown is closed? Because that's an admin number coming from the parent organization being charged to Pottstown. The response is that that number doesn't really go away. It has to be reallocated to all the other facilities. So closing the Pottstown Y doesn't solve an operational issue. The seven-hundred-thousand dollars doesn't go away, it goes somewhere else. So if pressed on that, his response was, well, you know, it's not really the operational loss, it's the building. We would fund the operational loss, but it's the building. So we have some astute members on, on our Task Force, and one of the, one of the people started pressing him on the building. They said, well, it's eleven million dollars over ten years. What would it cost? What would you budget on a normal basis for a building that size, which is eighty thousand square feet, and it's an older building, it's forty-eight years old? What would you budget normally to be reinvesting in that building? So he did some math, and he came up with a number that worked out to be about six-hundred-thousand dollars over the course of ten years. So now what we've got is a five-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit over ten years, not, I mean, a five million, I'm sorry, a five-million-dollar deficit over the course of ten years, not an eleven-million-dollar deficit over the course of ten years. So I think I, I just want to make sure that I was clear on that because I, I may have stumbled on that number. It was six-hundred-thousand dollars annually, which adds up to five million dollars subtracted from the eleven you had a couple of minutes. It's, it's, it's just, it just seems to be that there's too many unanswered questions with the numbers. So anyway, Sean's narrative has now kind of changed to, well, this isn't a new problem. Pottstown has been losing money for a long time, and he, he's almost dismissive about it and makes you feel like Pottstown should have been closed a long time ago. And quite frankly, I'm offended. A lot of the people that I'm talking to are offended, and we're, we're just not sure why he doesn't understand what the Pottstown community is all about with regard to the Y. Our YMCA has been here for years, we've always taken care of it ourselves. We want to take care of that. We want to fix the problem, and we're going to continue to push back and try and get some, get, get a resolution to this. But as of right now, they're, they've got their heels dug in, they, they don't want to hear, the, the Task Force was not supposed to be talking about keeping the YMCA open. They were supposed to talk about how to move outside. So as of right now, they've leased a childcare facility right outside of the borough, ten-year lease, so they're moving forward with that. They're trying to relocate Potts Grove Swim Club to, the Boyer Town, the Pottstown Swim Team to the Boyer Town Facility. They're trying, from what I can see, they're trying to accelerate their move out of Pottstown because of the pushback that's coming from the community. So I can talk for a long time, as I've been doing a lot of research, but I don't, if you want to ask any questions, I'd be happy to.
Okay. But thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Wasn't, weren't they allocated, I'm not sure if I'm right about this, but I had heard that they were allocated a certain amount of money for a boiler system, and they never followed through and put it in? And that money is, nobody knows where?
At the time of the original merger, there was two-point-eight million dollars in reserves. The one million of that was to go towards the construction of the Upper Park YMCA. One-point-eight million was supposed to go into capital improvements at the Pottstown facility. If, their, their response would be that we've spent plenty of money on the Pottstown facility over the last ten years. But the boiler was identified on the original merger agreement as something that needed immediate attention, and it hasn't been addressed in ten years.
Any other questions? Okay. I thank you. I'll start first on this. I went through a similar situation corporate-wise in nineteen, in the nineties, when an outfit from Ohio came in and bought the Stanley Flag operation. And what they did was come in, start mismanaging and misdirecting the operation to run it into the ground. But they kept taking all the money out over to Ohio. So AMCAS got all the profit, and the facilities at Flag got worse and worse until they couldn't run profitably anymore. And then AMCAS said, well, you know, you're not running out of profit, we have to close you. Which was their intent all along, as we found out, I think they had done that to fourteen. And this is, is so much the same scenario that I'm seeing out of the Y. We referred to it as the, the gold mine scenario, and in this case, I think the executives are taking all the gold out of Pottstown, and we're left with the shaft. It's not fair to the greater, the people of the greater Pottstown area. And with that, in your packet, you should have a copy of the Resolution Number twenty-eighteen opposing closure of the Pottstown YMCA by the Pottstown Borough Council. I'd like to know if there's any additions, corrections, or suggestions to change this. If not, I'll, I'll have this listed for your approval Monday night. We'll sign it and send it. And on this topic, I do want to thank Mr. Grant for what you put in the paper. I sent a copy of that to each of our councilors this, this morning. If you can do any more, or anybody can do any more investigative reporting on this to stop it, we'd appreciate it. Okay, number ten, EAC amendments to the bylaws. Mr. Dur.
Good evening, council. I hate following something like that, but certainly has an effect on quality of life and, you know, the, the general environmental health of the Pottstown community. Hopefully, there is some solution to be found. But, but basically, the, the primary reason is just you, I think the minutes have been, haven't passed along for the package. The EAC has, has generally operated under an ordinance that was passed in two thousand and three, and has been relatively loose. We're looking to have a little more structure to it. One of the things there, which I think is one of the reasons for bringing the specific amendment or the specific portion of our draft bylaws that we're working on, is because it has to do with membership, which is one of the things which is in the ordinance. We several times have had folks who, you know, have essentially just dropped out of the EAC without notice, without resigning, and it leaves just an, an empty void that we did not have a process to fill. So what we are, what we are proposing to put in the bylaws is a membership requirement that if a member of the EAC misses more than three meetings in the course of a year, which is sort of consistent with PDA and, and some other organizations that we looked at, then the, the, the remaining members of the EAC can notify that person that their membership can be, can be revoked. So, and that's sort of the real key of the, the business that's, that's there. Informationally, Stephanie had already mentioned Rock the Block, which, you know, Katie Scalen, who's on the EAC, is, is actively involved with that and the Climate March and so forth. So we've also got some ongoing communication, beginning to maintain with some regularity with the Hill School Sustainability and the Montgomery County Sustainability Coordinators. So.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eleven is a Fire Chief Ordinance Amendment. Do you address this, Mr. Garner?
If council recalls, I think we've had some conceptual discussions about the ordinance that establishes the qualifications for the Fire Chief. Right now, the ordinance is somewhat stringent, and it requires the chief to reside within five miles of the borough limits within one year of date of hire. And I know there's been some concern, at least from the manager and some others, about whether or not that limits potentially applicants from applying for that position. So if, if council's inclined to want to liberalize that requirement, it would take an amendment to the ordinance. Again, I'm not sure what council is thinking, but certainly something more than five miles would give you a greater applicant pool for the future searches, but it's certainly council's decision, so for your discussion and consideration.
And I think the suggestion under different discussions in the past was to increase that to ten miles. If there's no opposition...
I mean, I, you, you know, I think when we first were talking about this, I said, they need to live in the borough. It wasn't within five miles of, of the borough limits. And when you're looking at a budget where you're going to be in, in twenty-twenty, just in the general fund, almost five million in the hole, I, I'm not, I'm tired of paying people that don't live in this borough. And that is my, my biggest issue. And I realize that, we're talking about the applicant, if you want the job that bad and you want the salary that you're receiving, you're going to live in the borough. I mean, you mean to tell me we can't find somebody who wants the job with that pay that won't live in the borough? What does that say? Why do you want to work here, then? It's my issue.
Okay. Okay, we'll list it for Muddy. Twelve, the volunteer firefighter recruitment incentives is being postponed till next month. And I'm filling in, as I announced upfront, we're going to talk about the traffic signal project. If you will inform us, Mr. Yerga.
Yes. We got a request from Traffic Plan Design, who's been the engineer on the closed loop project since its inception back in around 2004. The contract, the existing contract is scheduled for completion on May of 2020. They're asking for an extension to June 30th. There's been some extension of counter days to the contract because of weather and stuff. So, and this does not cost us anything. All the engineering is reimbursed by the state through the federal money. So, I mean, this is a $13 million contract, and Traffic Plan Design is the overseer of the technical aspects of the project. Their job is to make sure that the contractor can keep moving and doesn't get hung up because of some kind of technical issue. So it's a month extension. It doesn't appear to be, at this time, a problem.
So you are in favor of it?
Yes.
Very good. Any questions or discussion on this? If not, we'll list that for Muddy. Thirteen, Community Development Block Grant Applications. Is Courtney here? Okay, Doug?
Okay, we're looking for a grant to improve the lighting from either high-pressure sodium or mercury vapor, but convert more lights over to LEDs. Right now, we're targeting the downtown area in an effort to try and continue from Manitoni up to Hanover. Now, we have all LEDs in there, so we'd like to take it to the next three blocks to extend it up to Evan Street and take the Victorians on the 12-foot poles, and then also fill in in the downtown where we have the aluminum poles left over from the '60s, take them out and do like we did out here, where we put the Columbia fixture in, which is a higher pole with like a teardrop. And then there are also LEDs. So we're looking to try and upgrade all the lights from, essentially from Hanover up to Evan Street. Now, I'm still waiting for the cost estimate to see how that's going to fit into grant monies, to make sure we can cover it with the grants instead of coming up short. But that's where we're at on that. So that's what we're trying to accomplish now. Also, keep in mind that all the traffic lanes that we could, we've got LEDs on the intersections now, so we've got that upgrade. When they do the connection project in the tail end of the closed loop on Hanover Street, we'll have LEDs all the way down and including the bridge. So that'll be upgraded under this contract. So just trying to work everywhere we can to try and get the, and the good news would be on this stuff, it's all metered service. It's our meter with the electric. So whatever we can reduce that load, that's good savings, as opposed to a street light that's tapped off a PICO secondary, we have to pay a fee every month for that tap, where these things are on a meter service. So if we can reduce the electric bill by 50%, that's all good savings for us.
Good. Okay. If there's no discussion, we'll list that for Muddy.
I have one question. You, Don wanted to know if there was any, sorry, the aluminum poles, do we get anything, any kind of kickback for any of those that they scrapped?
Right now, well, we have the pile. We have everything. We have all the poles, all the controllers, all the heads. Now, a certain amount of stuff got damaged in their effort to take it down. I mean, they weren't real careful with some of it. But I'm talking right now with Philadelphia. They have over like 1,000 controllers that they have to maintain, and they're always looking for parts because they're cannibalizing, you know, older stuff to keep their older stuff going. So I'm talking to them now and seeing what kind of deal we can work. I mean, certainly if our poles are still compatible with what they're using, the controllers, if they have our older, our controllers are, what, about 45 years old now? So I don't know if they still run that stuff, but I'm talking to them to see, municipality to municipality, if we can strike a deal, we might be able to get something out of it. But we'll have to see how that goes. I mean, there's certainly a certain amount of scrap value, too, because all those poles are aluminum stuff. So we'll have to see how that works out. But I'm trying to find an outlet. I mean, the other option was to put it on a mini bid and just try and bid it out and see if anybody's interested.
Do you have any idea what kind of savings we'll have by changing into the LEDs?
Well, as a minimum, on the traffic light, but electric bill, we spend probably around $60,000 a year for the electric. I mean, we should see at least a 50% deduction. Now, PICO's already told me that even though we put the street light as part of the traffic light control box, you would expect that's one tap because it's the traffic light and the street. But no, they say, well, that's two taps. So we're still going to end up the way it looks. We're still going to pay a separate tap just for that street light to be connected to the traffic control box, which doesn't seem right, but that's what they're telling me at this point. So I can't say for absolute the numbers yet because we haven't added everything up yet in terms of, obviously, there's a lot of equipment in the box now compared to our old electromechanicals. I mean, there was a little box inside of the yellow boxes, so now we've got a full-blown computer network inside there. So there's a lot of other equipment that might offset some of that savings because now they're just more physical components involved. But we'll see. I haven't seen the final tally yet from the contractor as far as what one cabinet represents in terms of load. We paid PICO now presently on a load basis based on the incandescent bulbs, the control cabinet. So now that formula has to be all reworked because we're not a meter service for every corner. We're still an un-metered corner, so we still have to come up with some kind of load calculations and see how that stacks up against what we were paying before. I don't have those numbers yet. I'm still waiting on the contractor to get me a listing of all the components and what the draw is on each component to see what we've got.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? All right, we'll list that for Muddy. Fourteen, PDITDA, beer tent, 5K Riverfront Park, June 28, 2018, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Any issues on this? Okay, we'll list that. Fifteen, Fee Schedule Amendment for Parks and Recreation. Do you have the documents in your pack? Any discussion? Would you like to make any comment, Mr. Yerga?
No, just, you're going to see two fees associated with advertising changes there. First, it reflects moving from a paper newsletter to a digital newsletter. The last paper newsletter will be this spring. After that, it's a digital format. The advertising fees need to reflect that. So those fees have been adjusted. Second is providing for advertising field sponsorships in Memorial Park, much like Little League does. They have an outfield fence. Folks can sponsor by getting business signs on those fences. We'd like to do the same thing in Memorial Park, be able to build a fence that better enhance the field and hopefully get some revenue out of it.
Wonder. And we'll list that for Muddy. Sixteen, Possible Board Appointments. A, the civil service, we have no applicants. EAC, there's one vacant term, no applicants. Harb, one five-year term to expire. Name I have is Mark Harvey. Human Relations Commission, one vacant term to expire, 10/11/2020, no applicant. E, Land Bank Board, this is new. There will be five terms of one, two, and three years. The requests for admission to that is Cyril Cirillo, Twyla Fisher, Deborah Penrod, Andrew Minostra, and our own Carol Culp. If there's no discussion on this, we'll list that for voting on Monday evening. PDITDA, two vacant five-year terms to expire, and we have Vicky Giammarco as the only applicant. Now, 17 comments from citizens present.
I'll take a quick moment, just an addendum I forgot to mention, talking about the EAC. I dropped just a note on this. Some questions came up, and one or two folks at the committee had heard questions about the Washington Street property, the old Pottstown lighting works, and just, you know, some queries are interesting, confirming the condition of that property. I know that L came in and did a lot of decon work when that was decommissioned. So it's one of those details that, you know, we are interested in making sure that we can provide whatever perspective the EAC can provide if that property, if further discussion on that property transfer and arrangements with tax forgiveness goes on.
Okay. Thank you. I have one listed, a Sandra Franklin, and I think she spoke, yeah, during the conditional use. I think she's gone. If you're here yet and you want to speak some more? No. All right. We will have the general discussion from the councilors, and there will be an executive session following. So real estate?
Judicial delivery.
Judicial, okay. And we won't be returning, there'll be no action. So, councilor's general discussion. Counselor Prosser, anything?
Of course, I'd like to thank our police department and our county DA's office for taking care of our unfortunate situation, proving that Pottstown's the last place you want to do something like that.
Right. Don't do it here.
And Chief Drumheller as well. And it's, everybody in town thanks you for your service, suffer with criminals, I suppose. And of course, my family does, too. Thanks.
Counselor Culp.
Yes, I would like to thank Chief Drumheller for his service and the hard work that the department did in taking care of this homicide. And yes, I was at breakfast at the book side, and it was really good. I even got to take some home. So that was enjoyable.
Good. Counselor Leibnizky.
Chief Drumheller, thank you for your service. It's really appreciated. Also congratulate the Villanova Wildcats. And that's about it.
Good. Counselor Kirkland.
I'd also like to thank the chief for his service. Not, you know, this current crime that was committed, I mean, to me, this is just another situation where the police department came through, you know, under his leadership. So I just wanted to, you know, thank him for his leadership, his toughness that he showed, his honesty and integrity that he's displayed during his time here as chief. Also, I'd like to ask the Pottstown community to pray for the family of this young lady. I know the mother personally, and I just want to implore the Pottstown community to support them with their prayers. That'll be it. Thank you.
Counselor Paez.
I just would like to say thank you, and I really want to meet you.
Counselor Rons.
Chief, I'm not going to thank you yet. I still have three months to bother you. And on a personal note, you know, sometimes I think Pottstown Hospital, especially with the merger and everything, gets a bad rap. And I just want to thank the staff there, especially Dr. Jeter in the ER and Dr. Nasir, one of the surgeons, and the staff. They performed some lifesaving surgery on my dad this past month, and, you know, it's a really good resource to have in our borough.
Very good.
This is probably super unconventional, but I don't really care.
Are you going to cook, serve food, or dance for us? Well, Chief, I think you know our...